Hello folks, how you doing?
Pretty good, how you doing?
Hello.
How you doing? Waiting for some more people. We've got several elevators. We are going to be here to ask if the mayor would like to have a formal sit-down or a discussion about his concerns along with our concerns and try to see if he would like to have a friendly discussion about the topics at hand. Is everybody up here? My name is Justin, I'm sure you guys are aware. I'm the organizer of the event that just took place. I would like to speak with the mayor, I'm sure he's probably not here. But if he is here, I would just like to meet with him, shake his hand, and see if he would be willing to have an open discussion.
Hi, Tim McNulty.
Hi, Tim.
Justin Dillon.
Oh, Justin, hey, yeah, I brought about you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. Do you want to just sit down for a second?
Absolutely.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Uh, yeah, so the mayor is not here. Do you want to leave anything for him to review, or... Here's my card. Here's my card if anybody wants it.
We're basically just here to give an invitation to you, to the mayor, to city council. You know, we heard you, we hear what you're trying to do. We do have different views, and that's understandable, but we can be civilized and actually have an open discussion if you want. You know, bring whoever you guys want, we'll bring who we want, have an open forum to talk to it, let the public decide what they think is best for their community. We understand that something has to be done. People dying senselessly is uncalled-for and unjust. But those actions aren't anything to do with the actions that are the people are here today. What he's trying to do, and I'm sure you understand that, it's against state law. It's against state preemption. The state preempts you guys from enacting any ordinances relating to firearms or firearm components. They're the only body that can do that. There's a right way to do it and a wrong way. It's one thing to ask us to follow the law when you guys, not you in particular, but the mayor verbally says that he doesn't care what the state law is and he's going to violate it anyways. It kind of contradicts itself. I'm here, I drove two and a half hours to be here. No, this isn't my town, but it affects me just the same.
Sure.
And there are some of these people here that it's their town. I think that what happened was uncalled-for and unjust. I wish the only person that died that day was the suspect. I wish no one died, period. But if somebody was going to commit that kind of crime of a heinous violent act, I think that that should have been just cause for him. But I think there's other ways we can do this than enacting ordinances that restrict gun owners. None of the laws that you guys want to, or ordinances that you want to put in effect, would have stopped that. He committed murder. That's illegal. It's been illegal, but he already broke that law. And what are three, or six, or seven more laws going to do? You can pass a hundred more. It's not going to stop that. An incident can and will probably still happen, unfortunately. We do live in that time. That's why you have a courthouse like this. That's why you have a prison. Criminals, people do dumb things and have to get punished for that, but none of these people here should. So, we're asking for an open invite. Take your time to review whatever you want to do, let the media cool down, you name the place, the time, and we'll be there. It could be neutral grounds, but it has to be open.
Can you just send me an email?
Absolutely.
And then we'll put it on the front of the mayor, on his desk, and we'll see where to go from there. The main, sort of official, sort of public interplay, of course, will be the public hearing on the 24th, which I know everyone here is aware of.
Yep.
And, of course, we'd welcome anyone to come to that. Probably be a lot of people there, on both sides, you know. But that's where things will be formally entered into the public record, you know, having to do with the bill, the three bills. But additionally, if you'd also email me a request to be with the mayor, I'll get that to him too, so...
No, will it be...
Couple different tracks there for getting your opinions out to him.
Will the mayor be attending that meeting?
To the hearing?
Yes.
Haven't decided yet. Still a couple weeks off.
I think since he's basically the spokesman of it, and he wants to do the ordinance, he should be part of the hearing. If the community's going to be there, then he needs to hear the community.
Typically, it's not the elected officials who speak at those things, it's just a hearing to gather public information, or public input. But, so I do not know if he's going to be there.
Okay. Like I said, I definitely want to, even after this, have a different kind of meeting. Like I said, open to the public, open to the media, open to really anybody that decides to come there. Like, it could be moderated by whoever you decide to moderate.
Yeah.
Somebody neutral.
We'll talk to him about it, I don't know how constructive that would be, having it be an open thing. I think, you know, just a couple people talking, you know, person to person could maybe be a little bit more constructive, but we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Can you comment on...
I'm sorry, ma'am?
I live in Scoville, and I would like to talk to you.
You want to talk after?
It is important to address this because, like, I lost eleven of my neighbors and friends. And what is still challenging to process it, and what... And the best of my capability I can express is that we cannot use the anyone's circumstance like this to promote any agendas. I don't have even television, so I don't know what he says and she says does. All I know is that if we promote more love and less the other, then we can accomplish something for the people that have a Torah and go to synagogues. That's the First Amendment, right, sir, that this wonderful country of America has? And because of the First Amendment, right, we have the Second one, we have to second it. So the only way, even though that I'm not phoned, that I have to do it, but I have to defend myself, so the only way to defend myself is the way our police officer had his hands hurt. That was unjust to that officer that was trying to protect. And so, we don't have to have the same force, but we have to have a gun. The person has to have a personal gun to knock the gun out of that other person. So it's more like, let's educate us not to be afraid of guns, not to be afraid, to learn how to use them properly, and to learn to just protect my mom dead, our children, your own wife, sir. You need one yourself. I thank you.
Thank you.
Can you comment on what Justin said, that what the mayor wants to do is unlawful? Do you have any comment about that?
I don't. I'm just here to, you know, to meet with Justin at his request.
Could you please give us a statement, maybe, from the mayor that would simply let us know here, what is the justification behind Mayor Perdido's...
I'll just let his previous words stand. Yeah, I'll just let his previous words stand at the press conference we had a couple weeks ago.
And what are his previous words? Can you help us out?
Sure, if you hang on, I'll get you a copy of the statement.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Sir, what's your name and title?
Here, it's right here. Can I have one of those?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got this, why I brought it piles.
Thank you, sir. Sure.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
You have to understand that this is a bigger issue than me or any other organization that's here. It's really hard to sit here, I'm sorry, it's really hard to sit here and listen to someone that has been a victim of such a heinous crime committed upon someone that has different religious beliefs or differing opinions. It strikes a nerve with me quite a bit. I don't think that this is the same country I once grew up in. It's definitely changed politically and, you know, with social media and everything, it's definitely changed, and I'm sure you've known it from when you were a kid. But, like she said, we shouldn't be using... I'm sorry. We shouldn't be using an incident like that when the bodies aren't even in the ground yet, they haven't even mourned, and we jump, we jump right on something and go, "Oh, well, we need to do something, we need to act," and you guys want to get people on their emotions when they're at their highest and say, "Well, now we got to do something." Doing something is not waiting for something to happen, it's doing it before it happens. Just like the police were here, they knew what they were doing, they had a plan in head. Before I even got up to this office, you guys were already aware I'm coming up here. That's a plan pre-a-plan. But could you stop something if it happened like that? If somebody came up here and just decided to go, you know, ape crap up in here? I don't know. But, that's the thing that needs to happen. Unfortunately, like you said, you know, you go to any football games here at the Steelers Stadium, it's very heavily armed with police presence, metal detectors, stuff like that. We need the same places in our schools, we need the same setup in our churches and our synagogues, no matter what their denomination or religious beliefs are, that all has to be taken place. Our community has to be protected at all times, regardless of their views. Just like the police were here, the majority of them were for us, but there might have been some that didn't agree with us, but they still did their job. They were still here, we did what we did peacefully, and we went the right way to do it. There's a right way to do things. And that's how we need to do it from this time on. I understand you guys want to do something. I'm sure you guys don't want to turn on the five o'clock news and see that. But, just like earlier today at 2:20 in the morning, somebody gets shot about five blocks away, three times in the chest. That person just basically committed either murder or aggravated attempted murder. So that person committed a crime, so none of the 2,000 laws that are on the books currently stopped him. But that stops me from doing anything because I know what the laws are. I wouldn't even attempt to do something like that. So, I think, like I said, an open discussion is better because if it's closed, no one knows who said what, things can be twisted. That's why the general public should be part of that, the media should be part of that. So it's being recorded, just like it's going to be recorded at city council, the media's going to be there, it's in the records now. Same thing, if me and you were just having a discussion back doors, how do they know what we said, or what you said, or what I said? It's now he said, she said. You could go on the news tomorrow and say, "Well, he came in threatening me," and no one would have been the wiser. Now it's my word trying to back that up. So, I'm not saying that's what you would do, but I think that's a good way to start. Let's have an honest discussion between your city council, the mayor, chief of police, whoever needs to be involved, and come to some kind of conclusion. And I will even personally help you get it passed through Harrisburg. I will personally go down there myself and help you pass it. I will take time out of work, just like I did today, and do it. I'll be just as passionate as I was today, and so will all my followers be passionate to do it, right along with me. And I think that would also help your cause, and it would also help make your community a lot safer. So, like I said, I think there's a better way to do this. I would like you to pass that message on to the mayor and...
You going to email me?
Yes, I will definitely email you with more information, and then you can let me know, or he can let me know, however you want, whatever is talked about on email, we'll stay, you know, between us...
Okay.
Until further notice.
Sounds good.
As the communications director, do you have any thing to say to the people who vowed not to comply with Mayor Perdido's gun control?
I don't understand the question.
So, hundreds of people just vowed to not comply with this legislation. Do you have anything to say to those people?
No, I mean, we'll look forward to the public hearing, and anyone who wants to can express that opinion then.
May I also say, uh, input? We are talking about, like, even the minority of the people, that usually their voices are not heard. I don't know, but from what I understand, this is more Democrat versus Republican community. Oh, well, that puts the Republican community as a minority now. I'm not getting involved with politics at all. All I'm saying is that it's supposed to be healthy balance of all the voices. What my another opinion is, just same as I want the best wishes to you and the mayor, I have no idea about all those things that people are talking about. All I'm just saying from my heart, that I believe that, like, best wishes to you and to President of the United States equally, regardless that you are opposite parties, or whatever people are. That means we speak a breath of life and blessings into you guys. So we speak the good, positive vibe and energy. So, what is really, like, challenging for me to process is, like, why do we have to, like, I have to have a lady asking me in the street, says, "Well, you are coming from the Orthodox Jewish community, and this happened to your neighbors," and I'm surprised, she said, that I love guns. I love Torah, and the Torah gives me freedom. And because I love Torah, we have, in this country, that is one of the most beautiful countries that I would rather be, if Pittsburgh is one city other than Yerushalayim that I want to be. So I thank you, first of all, for your hospitality, for making Pittsburgh be my home also, as well as Yerushalaym would be. But I just wanted to express my opinion that, if I may, sir, that, like, that lady said, like, how I am supporting guns, well, I said, "The explanation of what the guns are about is what people need." That means if we use this in a positive energy, that means that is the pro-life. For me, gun represents pro-life because it could protect lots of children that cannot even hold one, right? But if, because we don't want the exposure, so this is why we have the profound document as United States Constitution. That document protects my Torah, my freedom, my liberty of this speech right now, the liberty that I can even come here with the Israeli flag, the liberty of the love that we support here. So we are not saying, like, we want to, if you could be kind to tell the message, I'm not representing my Jewish community because I don't know what they are believing, because each person believes to their own, but what I'm representing is just a friendly note to mayor, that I wish him the best, and that I want him to rethink everything that he's doing to, in the behalf of the people that don't even have a television, we don't even know, like, what is going on, because we don't read this, we read the Torah. But all I know is that my Torah is protected by the United States Constitution, the First and Second Amendment. And the only way that my First Amendment, right, freedom of religion and freedom of speech can be protected, if I second it. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, I owe you a statement.
I have one last question for you.
Oh, yeah.
Is there anything that you can give us? Because when you guys were elected and your administration came to office, you committed to the entire people on both sides, so what we're looking for is anything, I heard Justin do a lot of talking, is there anything that you can give to our community, you can say to our community, that would help us understand that you're not the enemy? That you are serving the...
Well, I mean, we are trying to be good hosts, you know, today, and we talked a little bit about the, you know, the law enforcement, working with you all, and, you know, we deal with protests of all kinds, all the time.
Specifically in regards to the legislation and the hot topic issue here, how can you, is there anything that you're prepared to give us as a statement that shows us that you're still, even though we disagree with you, you're still continuing to serve the entire community of Pittsburgh and not just one political party?
Yeah, well, this isn't a political, you know, statement.
I understand.
Introducing these ordinances, it's a, you know, the mayor considers it, you know, almost a public health matter and not a political matter.
And that helps us. That kind of stuff helps us understand where it's coming from.
And, you know, and would welcome bipartisan support, or just bipartisan communication.
So he considers this a public health risk, and we can categorize it as that...
Yeah, he does, that's fair, yeah.
Can I ask another question with that? If he thinks that this is a public health risk, would he be willing to stop taking funds from out-of-state politicians to run for his campaign when he's re-elected? I mean, he got half a million dollars from Bloomberg for his reelection campaign. That's an outside entity that has no business or any reason to do anything for Pennsylvania, regardless if they're friends, or buddies, or they've got cocktails one time. We all know who Bloomberg is, we know what he supports, and we don't agree with anything that he wants to do. He's an extremely radical person with no real ideal or any hope. And I think it's past that time. We don't want to be infringed anymore. We don't want to come down here and have these meetings anymore. There's a right way to do things, and there's a wrong way to do things, and this is the wrong way to do things. I come to you, like I said, as man-to-man, to talk to you, to talk to the mayor, to talk to city council, to say, "This is how we feel." You know, we don't want any more compromises, we don't want to give any more, we've given enough. And I think it's time that we take some of those back and try to get some of them removed, to start gaining our rights back, because they haven't helped you since passing any of the following gun laws that are currently on the books. I mean, the gun law book used to be smaller than that, now it's five times that size. And it hasn't stopped anything, it's still happening. So, I think, like I said, we need to just come together with cooler heads and, you know, keep our emotions aside and what we think and our differences, and that's the only way things are going to change. Like I said, is come to some kind of bipartisan thing that says, you know, "We need to get rid of gun-free zones." If we can agree on that, we need to start, you know, arming and find ways to get federal government to get us money to pay for armed security in schools, to bump that funding, even ask for volunteers for the first year or something, see where the budget is. Start talking on those aspects to start really seeing some changes, and seeing if any of those don't work or do work. If they work, then we keep implementing it statewide. If it doesn't work, then we come back to the drawing board and keep going. But trying to restrict me or a law-abiding citizen isn't going to change literally anything. Shootings are still going to happen, people are still going to get murdered. It's unfortunately the way of life, we're not going to get rid of evil because of laws. Until humans are no longer here, there will be evil in the world. And that's plain and simple, I can't make it any simpler than that. And like I said, I thank you for taking the time to meet with me...
Yeah, thanks.
And listening to us, and I just hope that you convey that to the mayor, and, you know, hopefully, maybe he'll listen, and say, you know, "Maybe this time we can actually make some differences," if he's truly wanting to make differences. If this is not a political stunt, and he's not puffing out his chest because he got donations from an out-of-state governor or mayor, then show it. Your actions will speak louder than your words. So, like I said, I will send you my information, you guys will be more than willing to be able to get ahold of me any time of the day, and I'll be open to come back down and have any kind of meeting you guys want.
Okay.
Mr. Timothee?
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize, I tried to decrease, I really don't like all this camera business, but what I just want to tell you is that I thank you for your patience with all of us, and I also wanted to point out that our synagogues are spending lots of money for the police force, and I think it's a common sense, if you allow persons to be allowed to just practice their Second Amendment, right, the freedom of bare arms, normally the way it was for many years in this country, because this lady down in the steps told me, like, "Oh, wow, like, that United States Constitution is very, very, very old document." Well, to me, Torah is very old document also. So, I really believe in Torah, I trust that this old document is precious for Americans. So just to carefully make sure that the mayor does something wise, that if any change needs to be, not to touch the document, that is very precious. So I don't know, like, what those legislations are all about, but to see the other American citizens such as this group to be concerned, then that tells me that if somebody would try to alter the Torah, how that would look like, right? So, I don't know, but to those wonderful Americans here, it looks like Constitution is very important to them. So I just want to speak for those minorities, I'm sure that actually is not the minorities, because I'm sure that lots of Americans do have guns, and they are not using them in the wrong way, only right way, to what the Second Amendment stands for. And I thank you for your patience. Thank you.
All right, let me get, yeah, yeah, we can talk to you. Let me get that statement from the gentleman, I'll be right back.
So the mayor knew that this was going on, but he wasn't here today?
Yep.
Now, let's go. We couldn't get anything?
Did you find that meeting to be productive?
I guess only time will tell. Like I said, the mayor knew that this was going on. Instead of being in his office, or even coming down to talk with us, he's not here, he's MIA. I mean, he could be here, we just don't know that, and they're just telling us he's not here, but, you know, well, I guess, when the coming days, when I send them the information, I'll see if they'll reach out. If not, then I guess it wasn't, it was worth a shot. At least they know that I opened up a dialogue with them.
Where do you hope it goes from here?
Like I said, I'm probably sure they're going to wait to see how the vote goes on the 24th, but I hope they reach out before then, instead of wasting our time and our taxpayer dollars.
Do you anticipate them taking your request to meet seriously?
Again, I don't know if they're going to. You guys said, "Only time will tell." I won't know if they're going to take the request seriously. They might just laugh this off when we leave the office, they could probably delete my emails, it's easy to just go delete and not read it. So, like I said, only time will tell, hopefully I hear something, and then if I do, hopefully I can, like, release it and join them for a meeting, hopefully they're down for an open discussion with not only the public of Pittsburgh, but also throughout the state, and get opinions from everybody, because I think this is a very important topic.
But do you think there was an underlying meaning of why he didn't want to have a private conversation with you, and why he advocated for it not, or he wanted to have a private conversation, but he didn't want it to be publicized? Do you think there was an underlying meaning to that?
I mean, it could be. Like I said, you got to watch everything you say and what you do. We're very well, you know, know that media and anything likes to be twisted around, and I can't, I don't want to be part of that. It needs to be open, and it needs to be very transparent on what we're doing, because it's an extreme important topic, and I think that, you know, having the public and having the media present will kind of keep it really hard for anything to go wrong, or he said, she said, it kind of cuts that right out of the, out of their war chest, you can say.
Oh, thanks, man. And, excuse me. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
What's that? Tell the mayor it doesn't go, it's... I will. Thank you.
I'll get some free coffee or something.
I'm just waiting for some more people coming. My name is Justin Dillon. I'm the organizer of the Second Amendment rally that just took place outside of Port ico. We were just seeing if any city council members are here to just speak with us briefly on their opinion to the issue, if they're willing to have any kind of open discussion with us. We would greatly like to hear their point of view.
I haven't seen any, but let me call around, I haven't seen the council people this morning. Councilman, did you want to make a comment?
Sorry, guys, thank you.
I was just getting ready for you.
Yeah, I'll...
Oh, okay. Let's see.
Representative was coming up this way, she went like this. While the representative was coming over here, one of the council members, one of the ladies were like this to not come up to talk with us.
There's not available, there's no council people available.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Who was the councilman that was walking this way before they were shoot away?
I'm not sure which one it was. Um, I'm not sure which one it was.
So, they, they ordered- You just shoot them away?
Do you have the authority to? Are you, are you a manager for them, that you would have the authority to tell them to dis- disperse?
What's, what's the question?
The question was, somebody shoot a council member away, we wanted to know, was that one of their supervisors? They gave them the authority to do that.
I don't know, just saying-
Somebody shoot a council-
Who is somebody?
Lay a council member here and wanting, and your person to shoot him away?
Shoot him away?
Yes, and pull them-
Because she was making a phone call to the-
What, what do you want to do? Let's find out exactly, what is it exactly?
So, we're coming here just to see if they would like to speak briefly on the situation that's going on.
I think she called back to the office and no one is available to speak with you at this time.
Okay, but-
So, what do we want to do? So, no one is available, is the end of the question.
We just wanted to know why the receptionist was making managerial decisions to, you know, was it a safety issue?
No one is available to speak with you at this time. That's all, I mean, I mean, I don't understand if you're wanting to do something different or whatever.
We don't understand, she was making decisions, because somebody clearly at the desk was, uh, giving direction to a council member and a-
How do you know she was giving direction to a council member? How do you know?
Because the council member was walking this way, and when she walked that way, shoot him away. I don't know, because she said, council, do you want to talk? And he walked the other way.
Okay, but she has a right to, he, council or whomever have a right to say whether or not they want to give a comment correctly?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so they said that they're not interested in giving a comment at this time, so we have to?
Yeah.
I don't know that. Cause I don't know, you just said, you just said somebody else. You, you just said yourself, you verifying, I don't need to verify anything. I have no idea what you're talking about.
Do any of you?
Can you please tell me, um, where is the office of which Fitzgerald?
I have no idea.
Is he in this building?
No, he's in the county, he works for Allegheny County.
That's awkward, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
What are you looking at me with that for?
I don't know if you have a question or anything.
I'm just listening to you.
Oh, okay.
I'm interested.
We'll take, uh, tell them to thank you for their, uh, supposed time. It would have been great to have, uh, some kind of discussion with them openly, but apparently that is not the case.
We have a city council meeting tomorrow, feel free to come in, you know, do a public comment, that's the purpose.
Do they not work on Mondays, or? Do they not work on Mondays?
Uh, city council or city council, they may, they may be in their districts, or maybe in their field offices, I mean-
But no one just conveniently showed up today?
Um, I don't know, you have to speak with council about their convenience or whatever. I just didn't do anything, ma'am, I just walked up here, so be clear, and be, be accurate.
I wish you guys would be clear, I wish the council would be clear, I wish the mayor would be clear, but we can't get any of that.
Did you do something with the mirror, though?
No, we didn't. No, we didn't.
He must be one of his districts, too.
But that's not unusual, today's Monday.
Three-day weekend.
Those spoke people.
Yeah, I do know that it's like, the end of our day, our office normally closes at about four thirty.
We're, we're just looking for transparency and honesty.
And I'm, I'm, I'm here to give it to you, you know, but don't accuse or make statements that are not factual.
I, I think it's a simple question to ask if city council is here, and to get a clear yes or no answer. That's all we're looking for. I think it's, I think it's a very, uh, it's a very simple request. If we said, is city council here, and a simple yes or no answer is all we're looking for, that's transparency.
Yeah, they could have been yes, but they don't want to comment, instead of like, no, they're not here, and then we see what they see. I mean, it's, that's kind of like, really, you don't need to lie to us.
I just walked up.
She didn't need to lie to us, but that's, that's why I'm saying, like, it should have just been clear. Yes, there's a council member here, he's either busy, he doesn't want to talk, we'll see you in a meeting, whatever.
And I believe that's what she relayed, she said that they weren't interested in making a comment. There's no one available to make a comment.
So, that is what it's being said.
I thought when I walked up, that's what you told me, that she said.
Sure, some of the, no.
That no one was available.
No, she said that no one was here.
Okay.
So, I was just making sure that, we just want some honesty.
So, if we check protocol- If we research protocol, if we research protocol for this front desk, it is going to produce something-
Why are you still trying to incite?
I, I am not, but we're just trying to understand you.
Because you're, you keep asking a question about something. First of all, I wasn't standing here when what you say happened, happened.
We're just trying to understand your, your system.
Okay, so what happens is, is normally when you come to the front desk, you either sign in, and you ask for whomever. Usually, when you come here, you probably have an appointment with someone, or whatever, is usually the protocol. And so, what she does is she'll call that office and say, hey, such and such is here for their one o'clock appointment or two o'clock appointment, and someone from their office may come and get you, and they escort you back, or whatever, to that council person's office. But it's usually, that's usually what happens on this side, you know, but to come up and just demand, or whatever, that someone comes out, we don't, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any control over everything.
Can I please speak to a city council member? I've signed in.
Who would you like to speak with? Do you have an appointment to see?
Anybody that's on-
If they're available, but they, they're not always automatically available.
I understand.
Okay, if you want to, you know, sit and wait, then we'll see if anyone is available. I think that's what she did, she called and nobody, nobody is available. I don't think any council member, usually on Mondays, they're usually out in the field, usually. Tuesdays and Wednesdays are the days that council is in session, at council chamber, at ten o'clock, and that's why I said, when I walked out, tomorrow's ten o'clock, Tuesday council meeting.
I'm still having to take care of-
That's what I want to ask. Yeah, come in, feel free.
When is the meeting?
Ten o'clock in the morning.
Ten in the morning?
And then ten o'clock on Wednesday morning.
Okay, now-
And you come, and you sign up for public comment, and then make your comments.
Okay, I, I live in the city, and so, I want to find out from you, like, what are rules of that-
Public comments?
Right, public comments. Am I allowed to bring friends that are not living here, but if we have a same belief system, that they could come with me to help me?
It's public comment, anybody can come and make a comment, for three minutes, you have a three-minute time limit.
So, I did sign in, and my question is, I would like to speak to any city council member that can help us understand city council's position in reference to the legislation that Mayor Perdudo is suggesting.
And I'll tell you again, there are no council members present by the young lady that called back. I don't see anybody walking down hall.
Okay, so there is, city council is absent from, from this, from their office right now.
That I'm aware of.
Okay.
That I'm aware of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Oops, sorry. Justin, so you weren't okay with the, uh, the first meeting? I wonder how you feel about that one?
Uh, like I said, it's, a city council member was walking up to the front desk, and one of the receptionists, or people working in the back, kind of went like this, and got him away from the front desk, and even the secretary turned around and said, councilman, do you want to comment? So, I knew there was a councilman in the office. Hopefully, most of your cameras caught that, so we can go back and look that up, because I know I wasn't lying, and I wasn't imagining things, cause I saw her shoot, and I just turned right to the cameras at that moment, and was like, they just shoot her, shoot him away. And she turned around and says, councilman, do you want to make a comment? So, like I said, they don't want to be, uh, bothered, I guess, apparently, for why we're there, so, unfortunately, that's just, uh, how these things go here in, uh, Pittsburgh.
What does it say about the sort of state of government's transparency as a whole in the city?
Uh, they don't have any transparency with us, they don't want to talk, they don't want to meet, but they, they want to sit there behind their benches and their desks, and talk about public safety, but then don't, when the public gets here, they don't want to talk.
I, I have a question, you guys, can you guys go with me to support me, like, to go meet the, like, uh, county executive?
Are those, are those congressmen?
That's the guy right there that flipped me off. We were standing at the rally, he flipped us off, the guy right there in the sweater.
What, going in there?
Hey, you remember flipping me off down there with your chair at the window?
What's happening?
You remember flipping me off in your chair? He remembers, what's your position? You work for city council, shouldn't it be bipartisan? You should have, you know, you should put your politics-
Somebody should get his employee number or name, I mean, as, as a-
Ask him his name. What's your position, what do you do? You work for a government facility, what's your name? What's your position, what do you do?
You showed a sign of obscenity to a, a citizen bystander, so we think you should be held accountable for that, is that?
Please tell me the point.
He just admitted that he flipped somebody off. We have you on camera.
What's the point, what are we trying to do?
We want him to be held accountable.
Here, here's, here's, by law, when you walked in, you said you wanted to talk to a council member, right? Council member is not available, been real clear about it. So, what-
Right, what does that have to do with looking at the law?
What's that have to do with your employees?
We're not adjusting that situation at this time.
We're not going, we're not going to create-
Is that acceptable behavior?
It's nice that you're behind security.
Right, right.
Cause I don't know anything-
Good thing you got those guns to keep you safe back here.
Okay, so what do you want to do, what do you want to do?
File a complaint.
I want to hold him accountable for what he's done. You flip that guy off, it's in there.
He works here, right? So, he works for us, we pay his taxes, we pay taxes, he works for us.
Okay.
So, why is he flipping me off? I'm here for my section of my own.
Right here, today at five-ten, you want to meet? What, what? I, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to resolve whatever it is that you wanted to do, and you need me to help you with, to do. Now, what somebody did outside, I don't know nothing about that either.
He don't even want to give me his name.
Oh, okay, you would say, who want to give me his name?
No, you don't.
You don't know his name, you don't know his name, no figure. What are you, oh, you're done, too? Are you finished?
Yeah.
That's a shame you might act that way.
I mean, nobody's available, so that's pretty much all we can do, okay?
They're gonna have, um, people with guns-
You work for us, we don't work for you.
I, I think this is a public place, so, what are we doing wrong that's gonna, that's, that's allowing you to-
I'm not allowed to make public comment.
I just haven't been informed.
But you've just moved these people out of here, just asking you on what premise?
Is your oath to support the office or the constitution? Is your oath to support the office or the constitution?
I want to file a complaint.
Okay.
Can I do that right now?
No, you can't, no, if you want to file, like, oh, am I?
With, with who?
Oh, am I, or if you have any concerns, you can also-
No, I want to file a complaint with this office.
You can do that, yes.
And if there's no paperwork, I can do that right now? Can you give me a piece of paper that will show me how to make a complaint?
He'll take orders from Regina at the front desk, but not the constitution.
I'm surprised he admitted that he did.
So, at her disposal, she's got two security guys, they can just usher everybody out, and we have no idea what her position is, we have no idea of anybody's position in there, or how the management works, but in, at the snap of a finger, she can have everybody ushered out, but she knows nothing.
If you want, you want to come, step in here, just, just you, since you asked specifically. Alright, we'll get your information, and then I'll be able to pass the information along. Yeah, you write your information, pass on.
This is a little bit of harm to the online, that you typically do from the screen.
I think it's very serious, I don't know, but I can't, okay?
And you want my name and address? Just a contact information, phone number, so I'm gonna explain to you, my public safety director, who is, I'm in the chief, and explain to him that you had concern-
Oh, they also have addresses, all we need to make-
Well, we're gonna go for it, okay? Considering the gravity of the situation, I think, to satisfy your needs the best we can, okay? Well, the big deal is, is that we came here peacefully, and an employee here gave us a missing gesture inside the office building, from an office window, and we would like to find what we're talking about. So, you understand fully- Correct, okay. And, I mean, there's plenty of cameras, both mine, yours, are clearly, um, visible. Yeah, so, so, I mean, yeah. On film, he just, he just, he just admitted it, just admitted it on film, so- Well, okay, so, yeah, we'll take your information, I'm, I'm gonna do this, I have this information. Do you need any information on me? Uh, I would like to, I can provide that. I have been back here the entire time.
I'm glad the anti-gun activists are scoring like other towns. It's amazing how no one knows anybody else's name.
Your phone, your phone just shut, it shut off.
Everything I'm telling you, I'm asking this, so, there's plenty of ordered devices. Most likely with an officer, about an administration, so it's gonna be different.
Yeah, trying to look at-
No, no, we're, we're gonna handle this, there's any problems, any investigations, we can take it seriously.
Cause she was trying to get more-
I, 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 right now, what I'm gonna do is just provide you with this information, I'm gonna give you. I'm gonna take this, okay? If you want, I can even grab this here. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not privy, I'm, I'm here to enforce law.
I'm not asking, okay?
For asking for public information.
We have a president-
I apologize if there's any inconvenience, but I'm kind of put in the middle of this right now. I'm still trying to handle this situation. This is very unusual, typically handled, like, the large crowd, I'm trying to handle this. Correct, so you're gonna, you'll get, your resolve is that you want to do the type of investigation, into whatever you want to have done here. Either prior to you coming, or leaving, any time in between that, official police report numbers can be assigned to this particular incident, and then it can be investigated through law, I mean, it's an investigation through- Kind of catching me off guard, I'm not, that's alright, I'm not even, I'm, I'm trying to treat this just like I would treat a normal, a normal police interaction, and that's like, considering that I've got a lot coming. Okay, and I apologize for any inconvenience, or any problems you may have had here. Hopefully, they were able to answer any questions you have, but I'm not even, I'm not allowed to speak unofficially, I'm only trying to do my job as a police officer, okay?
I understand.
So, I got your information.
Thank you, sir.
It will be passed on to, like I said, the public safety director, the chief of police directly. We will skip those steps since this incident kind of, you understand?
Yeah, we're really gonna need some answers.
Alright, well, they were down, they were downstairs with you guys, too, so the same people that you saw downstairs on one, will get your information, I'm just wondering what happened, okay?
Alright, thank you.
So, hopefully this works out, sorry for any questions, or, or answers that weren't-
Officer, what's your name? Officer Speed.
Let me get a picture of that real quick.
You're welcome, take care, folks, good luck, right?
Thank you, John.
You're welcome, take care, good luck. We're looking for very basic information. By the way, I'm a business owner in the state of Pennsylvania, and we have ways of doing things, um, and it was, it was astonishing that I couldn't get basic information, like, who's your supervisor? Another piece of information that I was looking for is, how does this work? What is the process at your front desk, how am I able to gain access? She wouldn't tell me that either, so, there was just a lot of, uh, uh, things that they wouldn't tell us, and, but the officer did give me his name and his badge number, which I think is grossly insufficient, in trying to get anything, so. And tell me why you came up here again, you wanted to, I guess you wanted to meet with council members? Well, I'm being led right now by our, uh, by Justin Dillon, and, um, we came up here to speak to the mayor about legislation as it regards, uh, the proposed legislation that Mayor Perdudo is proposing, okay? It's gonna be talked about in the hearing coming up, and then what we wanted to do, we simply wanted to come over and get any council member's opinion or statement on, do or do they not maybe support Mayor Perdudo's position, or anything that would help us understand where the council's coming from in, in all this, and we got nothing, so. What's your name? My name is Boyd, B-O-Y-D, last name Martin. M-A-R-T-I-N. Yes. Boyd, where are you from? I'm from Seelens Grove, Pennsylvania. Seelens Grove. Seelens Grove, up by Penn State, right? Uh, about an hour from Penn State, okay? Thank you. Yeah.
No one. Uh, the, uh, the mayor's office for communications for the media told me to reach out to him via email, and that maybe he'll get back to me.